Morning, everyone, and welcome to the December twelfth. Rockingham County Commissioners Board Commissioners Meeting. And please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. In attendance, we have Commissioner Cherichello. Commissioner Coyle.
Good morning.
Commissioner-elect Tom Tambarello. Why don't you come and sit at the table? You deserve a seat at the table. And myself, Commissioner Godu. We are in full attendance for our meeting today.
You're intentionally putting low. Right and low.
All right, we'll start right off with RFP openings.
I move, so the first is the John Deere Utility Tractor, and I move to authorize the Senior Director of Facilities Planning and IT to review, evaluate the proposals and return with a recommendation.
Any discussion on that? Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Cherichello?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Recognize mobile data computers.
I move to authorize the High Sheriff to review, evaluate the proposals and return with a recommendation.
Discussion? Commissioner Cherichello?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
I vote yes. Waste water treatment facility award.
I move to award Phase One Reduced Scope Construction for Waste Water Treatment Facility Upgrades to PRV Construction Incorporated for an amount not to exceed four hundred and ninety-five thousand, as recommended by Cofflin Environmental Services LLC and the Senior Director of Facilities Planning and IT.
Any discussion?
A couple of questions. So it looks like we are doing a reduced, is that because it was just came in?
Funding.
So much, yeah, so we're.
Funding.
Funding. So we have, we're short like fifty K, right?
We're short like six hundred thousand.
Okay.
Overall.
In the overall project?
Yes.
But in terms of Phase One, it looks like we are fifty K shy on Phase One.
That's right.
So.
We have an open purchase order right now with Cofflin Environmental Services. They've done all of the engineering work for this.
Yes.
One piece of that was I had hoped that we could expand our spray irrigation to a brick irrigation at the lathe time. Just to give us someplace else to discharge to. Once they did the test fixing, et cetera, it's all clay. It's not a possibility. And so we're saving eighty thousand dollars in engineering fees because we won't be pursuing that element of the project.
Okay.
So we're.
We have the money.
We're reducing the amount in the purchase order to CES two to this if it's approved.
Or yes. Okay.
So is this money we need to consider for next year's budget?
We will be looking at it for next year's budget, yes.
We've exhausted all the aquafunds at this point, all the covered.
We could be good for a couple of years depending on how quickly the population grows. So we're pretty stable with this work for a couple of years. We wouldn't have to be signing the capital fund for six hundred. There absolutely not. There was also a hundred thousand in there to retire and replace the underground oil storage. And I, it's at an age where that should be done. So I'll probably put that in as a trust for next year's budget in that compliance line. Just to get that retired and replaced. It's an underground oil tank. It's about thirty years old.
Do we, would we go back to an underground oil?
I don't think so.
Cause like that seems like.
No.
Not a good plan.
No, the plan with this had been to go above ground.
If it's leaking, we want to see it.
Right, I think we need to capture it before it's leaking, but it's definitely at that age where DES recommends replacement. So it was on our long range plan, and we figured if they're up there and they're disturbing and they're digging and they're in the room next, you know, that we folded in, but it's just not going to happen.
Okay.
Okay. Any further discussion on this?
Does that increase the cost by doing it down the road, if we put it in the capital project?
Quite possibly. I mean, everything's going up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thanks. Thank you for those things.
No further discussion on this? We'll take a vote. Commissioner Cherichello? Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Award of Human Communications Center Consuls.
I move to award the proposal for Communication Center Console Furniture to Sistema Corporation for an amount not to exceed two hundred and forty-one thousand, six hundred and fifty-three dollars, as recommended by the High Sheriff.
Second. Any discussion?
Do, I just, I noticed in the support that it didn't have how many bids we had, what are the range of prices? And then I also, I tried to look at it, but I couldn't really understand the quantity, like how many consoles we're getting and things of that nature.
Sheriff, would you like to comment on that?
Can you just give us one second?
Sure.
Yeah, I just want to grab Captain Walsh, who spoke with all the vendors companies. But I know we did receive, we sent it out to five different companies that provide this type of equipment. We did receive five different bids.
Was this the lowest bid?
That I don't know off the top of my head. That's why I'd rather have Captain Walsh address it.
Fair enough.
Instead of guessing.
Sometimes we see all the bids.
I got them, I got them. Kevin, they were just wondering how this bid was compared to the other bids. Was it the lowest or was there a reason that we chose this one? We just didn't show the range of the bids on here.
Yeah, so it was, it was one bid higher than this one. And then there was a couple that were lower, a couple that didn't even qualify. They didn't meet the qualifications for the specs.
So was this the lowest bid that met the qualifications?
This one would be yes.
So how many, okay. How many bids do we have total?
We had five, five.
And then one was, so and this, and from a price standpoint, this was the fourth highest.
Correct. Total, yes.
And the other three didn't meet specifications?
Correct.
All three didn't?
Correct.
Okay. And how many consoles? Why, well, like what doesn't, why do, did they not meet specifications?
They either weren't ergonomic, they didn't center stand, they didn't have the proper lighting. They're made of a material that wouldn't, would be replacing really quickly rather than these ones that are more durable. They're going to last, they have lifetime warranties.
So how much more was this than maybe the next lowest bid? Well, I mean, is this a close situation or are we talking double?
No, we're not, no, we're not talking double. We're, they're all in the same price range. I mean, the next one, I think, was only like two thousand dollars higher. There wasn't a big spread between, between them. There wasn't often.
It's sort of, would you guys be okay if we tabled this so we could just look at the, like, actual numbers? I don't, I don't, I try, usually we get the.
We should have, we should see all the bid numbers on this. Is this, there going to be any hardship if we table this till next week?
Do we have to get those now or?
Yeah, the only thing I was rushing on was they need the electrical for the building so they know where to put the outlets and stuff. But they said as long as we had that before the end of the year, it should be good.
Yeah, would you mind table it until next week?
Yeah, that would be good.
We'll get you all, we'll get you all the information.
That's perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
So.
So entertaining motion to table.
Move to table.
Second, okay. Commissioner Cherichello?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
I vote yes to table till next week. Okay, consent agenda.
I move to approve the first meeting minutes, November twenty-first, twenty twenty-four, public and non-public step three reasons here in minutes, and November twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four, public and non-public.
Any discussion on the minutes? It will find to me.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, I missed, I mean, I was. So. Yeah, no, I, I.
Oh, did you?
I just missed.
We were supposed to remove public on there?
I missed. Okay, so as amended.
Okay, any further discussion?
I don't.
Commissioner Cherichello?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
I vote yes. Council Payable List.
I move to approve the December twelfth, twenty twenty-four council payable list total of two million, four hundred and thirty-seven thousand, thirty-three dollars and fifty-nine cents.
Any discussion on this?
Do a little bit just with respect to our hefty insurance bill that comprised a big portion of this warrant. And it sounds like, I mean, what is striking and what we should be cognizant of is that it looks like we're going to get some back from stop losses, that correct, Chuck?
Yeah.
But the concern I have, the bigger global concern, so we'll get some of that back, is what is our stop loss going to look like for next year? I mean, I think this is where we need to be, you know, in looking at this warrant, be mindful in thinking, you know, in the future about how our stop loss is going to be, it's going to be, when I see this, I'm like, oh, my gosh, our stop loss is going to be going up next year, and we need to. I don't, I don't know what we can do really to address this, but.
I did have a conversation with Gary last week, just in general. One or two of the claims that are out there, they're now, we hit pretty much the pinnacle of that claim. One or two of those claims because there's no hospitalization and stuff, I'll bet that's going on. So that, when the stop loss carriers are going, look at that, they're going to know that that's probably going on and drop off. So we'll be in a better place because of that.
This seems like an issue we don't have much control over unless we decide not to be self-insured any longer, but.
Well.
That's, I don't think at that point.
But yeah, fully insured would be much, much worse.
The issue, well, you know, I think maybe we can, there's another, we follow up that might be relevant but should not be a public discourse at this point because it could render a proposed act ineffective.
Agreed. Okay, so any further discussion on the AP list? Commissioner Cherichello?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
I vote yes. All right, Commissioner Updates.
I have something, just, I noticed, so what we're seeing is in, to address some of the paramedic issues. There's actually some effort along sort of communities in the one twenty-five corridor to establish a collaborative where people can, like, the communities can buy in to have a regionalized paramedic service. It's being led by the Fire Chief in Placeta, among others. But I think we should just stay tuned in, you know, stay tuned and stay aware of that because to the extent that the county, maybe, I mean, should we explore, reach out to them to try to discuss getting, you know, buying into this, something like that? As we look at the next budget cycle, I feel like, you know, in the next six months, we should be maybe bringing in the chief from Placeta, the fire chief from Placeta, or having some discussions with them about, is this something we want to try to contact with? I don't know. That was my thought of the.
I, I was, so your says organizational moving to the delegation where they elected all their officers and things like that. Michael Cahill from Newmarket did, the representative from Newmarket did talk to me and mentioned what they were trying to do. And he kind of mentioned on the side that may the, may the county, maybe there's some funds in the county can shift into. So he, he mentioned that. I did mention to him that I've had Molly, our grant writer, looking out for any grants that could hopefully help out. I mean, I know separately Molly's been discussing with, I think at least six or seven of the fire departments, a separate kind of grant assistance to firefighters grant as far as equipment and things like that, I mentioned before. And she's actually been meeting face to face with some of those, but she hasn't found any grants yet that fall into the ALS type services. But, you know, still keep on looking.
Well, I mean, it's so great to see that this is, there, we work on our community and, you know. I'm sure, we'll see. You know, it'd be worth it to gather more information, I think, at this point.
I'm obviously interested in the topic. Not sure that this, it, it almost feels like it's an expansion of our reach to get involved in it. Although there's concern for the county and we should address it and see where everyone's at.
Well, yeah, I was thinking more from a perspective of services for the county, you know? So not an expansion of reach, but making sure we have access to paramedic services, you know? That's the consideration for our population here, whether it's.
Has there been any activity that you're aware of with the Exeter Hospital continuing? You know, rescinding their, you know?
Not that, no.
Ending their service, that's a done deal, just a matter of when.
Yeah, exactly.
And is that when happening in January? I know they were extended to March.
I believe so.
Kind of think of a longer window for the extension than like services that you can, or COEH has.
Chuck, do you think we should reach out to Representative Cahill and see what they have for plans and what involvement they might suggest that we should have?
Well, I think what they're looking for is, I believe, purely money. What I tend to is recently, I think it was like, maybe in the last week, President Wyler actually sent around, I think he must have had access to something that, again, I don't know if there's a platform our chief had put together, but they've got some cost estimates and they do show that there's the, the concern is really about the upfront costs of like startup costs for putting this together. And then the cost will go down gradually, you know, because again, you won't be dealing with upfront costs. Because obviously, there's going to be lots of equipment and vehicles and what have you, maybe even personnel type costs too that are greater at the front and at the back end, like educationalized, certificationalized, what have you. So I'll forward that along, along, it's, it's numbers. It's not a narrative right now that was provided. So I'll forward that to Leila. And again, I know, I would think that probably the, the Placeta party applies to more details as far as what their, their plans are as far as greater details, some of what maybe President Cahill has. President Cahill is also on the executive committee. So we'll also have a built-in opportunity to possibly talk with him on that third or fourth Friday in January. That's the next executive committee.
So is there a formal, semi-formal committee that's actually meeting, you know, consulting together to come up with a solution? Or is this still really loose right at the moment?
Well, I think the fire chiefs themselves, it sounds like they've got something that they put together as far as meeting. I don't know how, how frequent or, or, you know, how organized it is, but they definitely put something together.
I spoke with the Placeta Fire Chief and essentially he said that they pretty much insisted, or has, not insisted, but has hired adequate technicians so that they are able to, you know, provide all of that service. They're more expansive, they have to be more educated, you know, and I don't know, but. But I, I think that they were pretty much set. Is it, did you hear something different?
They, well, I think what's happened is that the ones have then come together that they've, I, I, again, I'm not sure what their basis of this calculation is, but they've come up with a total cost for certain number of years. And they've actually got, again, there's all estimates, obviously, but like allocations to the different towns. But of course, then you have to worry about, you know, you have to go through funding this and so word articles and what have you and, you know, March.
All the other towns pay for it. You know, I mean, it's part of the budget process.
Yeah.
That the fire departments ought to be putting in to their town budgets. Now, maybe we can help with a little bit of assistance and I would be thrilled if Molly came up with something and a grant that was helpful. But, you know.
Stay tuned.
So I'll, so I'll share what I have, but again, a lot of it's just numbers, not necessarily narratives.
Okay, great, thank you. So we're still on Commissioner Updates. Did you have anything else?
I didn't.
Okay. Commissioner Cherichello?
Thank you. I received a phone call and I forgot his name. He was actually on the Zoom call last week. And he gave me a call and he owns a company that's, I don't know if anyone is familiar with Dodge Reports, the old Dodge Reports. They call it something different. It's, I want to say Community Something is the name of the company. And what he does is he looks at municipalities, all the bids and stuff like that, and he basically publishes them in a transparent fashion. And so he called me to say that Rockingham County does not, is the only county that doesn't show all of the bid numbers? And so I, you know, to be honest with you, I, I felt, okay, let me do some research. And I went and jumped on the website to see the, you know, the old RFP award bid lists. And it's true, so you actually have the winning bid, they publish that number, but then you have the other vendors that actually submitted bids, but it's blank. And he was inquiring about that as a transparency issue. And he had mentioned, you know, do I really need to do a ninety-one A every single time to get all this information? And I said, you know what, let me, let me bring it up on a future meeting, see what we can do. Now, I did call, I did call Leila just to see how we do that. And it's very, it's a very time-consuming thing to put all the bids out, you know, in public. So, but I told him I would bring it up and at a meeting, I don't see him on this, on this meeting here.
I'm here, can you hear me?
Oh, okay, yeah, okay, I see now, I'm so far away. I apologize.
It's okay. That's okay. Thank you once again for giving me the opportunity to speak before the Commissioners Meeting. I appreciate it. The company name is Construction Summary of New Hampshire. We've been publishing daily, Monday through Friday, for thirty-nine years now. So can you still hear what I'm saying?
Mr. Morin, at, at this point, we are conducting our Commissioner Updates. And if you would hang on, when there's an opportunity for public comment, we'll be happy to hear all about what you are proposing. Meanwhile, Commissioner Cherichello?
So, Mr. Chairman, since I have the floor and out of respect for this gentleman here, what's your, what's your name again?
My name is Bob Morin, M-O-R-I-N.
Okay. In respect, because I did talk to him about this, and it's not, it's not, really not fair to have him sit there for the whole meeting. So I would like to, if, if he would be brief, let him use my floor time just to explain real quick.
And I appreciate it, I wouldn't be brief.
Hold on one second. Do you object, Commissioner Coyle?
I just think typically we don't have public comment in the middle, but I'm not, I don't have any huge objection. I just feel like we should have a discussion among us before, I mean, you've represented his position.
Yes.
If you, but I.
My, my position on this at the moment would be to find out what, exactly what the other counties are doing and, you know, what kind of work they're going through to publish. I mean, it's interesting information that we're not publishing, all of that, and I'm, I'm somewhat concerned.
I, I don't feel concerned about it at all, if I may, just as a, I mean, point of order. We, this is, someone can, we have a public discourse about the bids every week when we have to award, make awards, right? And invariably, we talked about in these meetings, we talked about the award and where you are on the bidding list in the same way, reason, for the same reasons we tabled this award with respect to the furniture for the consoles because we want to have that data in that, then we use that data, we discuss it in public, and it's accessible to the public. I don't, from a transparency perspective, sure, it may be a little more work, you know, you'd have to tune into a meeting if you're interested in a specific award, but we publish the, our, we publish the agenda, so when we're making the award, we have these discussions. And if there's a, an individual from the public that has additional questions, then certainly that's an opportunity at public comment or to send an email or to have a discussion with us. Oh, Jude, do you want to speak?
We regularly, because we do a lot of the large dollar bids, we get inquiries from Construction Summary, from Construct Connect regularly after the bids, and we send them to the agencies. I've never had anyone, anyone, anyone on it.
Yeah.
If we have the information, we share it.
That's great. So we're making it accessible. I think the work that goes into, I mean, just stepping back, the, in terms of after the fact uploading all that information would be a huge amount of work. And I, my concern is that work would befall Leila. And I just, I'm, I am not inclined to add more to, just for the ease, you know? If people want the information, we don't, we're not withholding it, but I'm not about to.
Add an extra task.
Yeah.
Right.
So I just.
All right, so Commissioner Cherichello, do you have any more?
I, I have a completely different position than that. It doesn't have to fall on the Leila, you can make it to someone else. This is more of a transparency to the taxpayers issue, not only for this gentleman, but for the public. So when they jump onto the site, they have the right to see the bids, just like we have the right to see the bids. We, we mentioned that to them and we, we kind of saved them. So I get the fact that we're not, we're not withholding that information, but it should be public. If you've got the spreadsheet and you're already putting in the winning bid on the spreadsheet, you're just adding numbers to, to the. Now, I also understand the fact that, you know, sometimes these bids are not apples to apples, but that's, that's not our job to descend, you know, to, to, to give the asterisk at all those numbers. It's just to be post the numbers. I'm a true believer in complete transparency and, you know, put it in. We've got, we've got the website, I mean, we've got the website, we've got the link, and you're already posting all of the names of the bidders and you're posting the winning bid. So again, you're just adding the numbers to the, to the specific bids that people put in. So I just have a difference in opinion there, and it doesn't have to be Leila, I get that, I don't want to put more on Leila, but let's get rid of somebody else. It's not that different.
Okay, thank you very much for that update, and I think that we'll bring that up sometime in the future. Right now, we're going to move on with their agenda. I don't have any particular report to offer. The next item on the agenda is the sale of Seabrook Cemetery Lot.
I move to approve the transfer of all rights of Cemetery Lot Number Thirty-four, Section E, in the Hillside Cemetery to the town of Seabrook, New Hampshire, for no consideration via quitclaim deed.
I'm not going to second this because I'm, I'm not.
All right, second. Discussion?
Yes, I have some discussion. This is property that the county owns, and there's a process that we go through with everything, trucks, equipment, printers, everything else. This should not go directly, first off, I think we should open it up to anybody that wants it and try to get the highest amount of money for it. That's my personal opinion, I don't think we should just hand it over to Seabrook. I think we need to treat it as personal property that the county owns, and there are RSAs that guide that, so I will not be voting to do this.
Commissioner Coyle?
One, it is not personal property, it is real property. So that, in that, so that is a different process than a personal property. It's important to make that distinction. The second point is that, that with respect to the value, we know the value is in or around four hundred dollars. Because.
Six, I think.
Six, okay, sorry, under a thousand dollars, let's put it that way. Just for, the question to me is not whether, so from a just surely like simplicity to ease in the right thing, it's like, if this is aberrant, I think it fulfills the goals of the interests of the members of our, our constituency by transferring this to Seabrook. From a, just purely like, okay, we need to, this is something we're best set to give it to Seabrook to administer the distribution of this cemetery plot, which is of very limited value. The issue I have is that we got a, we got a legal opinion that says for all real property, we have to comply with this process. Statutorily requires us to approve the sale, go to get delegation approval, and then go through that process. And I think, you know, my, like, in a, this is like, it seems like a overreaction to what is just a cemetery plot, but I think because it falls under the category of real property, I think we have to be statutorily compliant and go through the process of delegate, getting delegation approval.
I agree, delegation needs to approve this, and they can't approve it till we make a motion to send it to them. And we hadn't done that before, so that we, you know, this is the proper way to handle this. I was the one that was contacted by the person interested, and I, I think, I know it was a surprise to everyone that we even owned a cemetery plot. We, we paid fifteen dollars for it back in nineteen thirty-five. It's, and I, I know it's valued at six hundred dollars, and it's an old section of the cemetery, and it, it's really just doing. It's, and, and I know it's valued with six hundred dollars, uh, and it's an old section of the cemetery, and it, it's really just doing a service. As far as the value, we're giving up a value of six hundred dollars for the county. But I, if we didn't do a quitclaim, claim deed, we, we'd probably spend more than six hundred dollars in closing costs and, you know.
Great.
To, so, it's not like we would profit from it. Uh, so, to me, this is just a good service, goodwill gesture, that we should fulfill, uh, through the, uh, normal, through this channel. So, further discussion?
Yeah, you can quitclaim to anybody, it's, it's not going to cost more than that.
Quitclaim.
Quitclaim deed.
Just, it's just a type of deed.
I, I understand, I'm in real estate, I, I get it. So, again, uh, you know, um, I think as a matter of fairness, it should be open to, to anybody. Um, I think we should try to get as much money as we can for it. Uh, I understand it felt as if somebody had talked to you about it, we didn't realize it, but it's still, still coming, coming on. So, for me, uh, you know, that's the way I would view it, just like if there's a. You know, if there's a vehicle, or gun, or walkie-talkies, or whatever you're going to do, we, we put it out to bid, highest bidder, so.
I'm sure, and my opinion, the town of Seabrook will, uh, fairly distribute the, the property. And make sure that they get the appropriate price, so I'm in favor of this.
What does that, what does the town of Seabrook having to do with being the proper price, I'm talking about the county.
I don't think it has enough value.
You just said six hundred bucks.
It's six hundred bucks, right, I don't think there's enough value to, to go through any legal, uh, you know, expensive legal procedure to, to, you know, disperse of it. We're not going to get enough money, we'd have to charge, you know, we'd have to ask people to pay five thousand dollars for it, probably before we were going to get to.
You're making a point, but no consideration, just to give it away.
Right.
So, this, so, it, it, it's zero, the county gets zero, so why are you concerned about, you can't, you're not going to get enough money?
Okay.
Doesn't make any sense.
Commissioner Coyle?
Just, that's just to keep us on track, so, are, are you, I think that my position is that unfortunately. And I say unfortunately, because I do think it has zero consideration, because to your point, you're saying after you pay legal fees for de-prep. For recording, for all these things, that there is no, and that's a cost borne by the seller that there is. So, maybe we could, that's a separate issue. I don't think there's like a profit margin here for the county that we're, you know, wasting county, but I think we do have to go to the delegation. So, I think the, what, I mean, I'm okay, why don't we just rework it as such? And then, um, we can have this discussion with the delegation, well, let's, I'm going to rework the motion. We'll give the delegation the, they can give us the direction on how to proceed, I'm okay with.
I, I would suggest that we should approve this motion, and then we'll go to the delegation, and the delegation will decide how it ought to be handled. And we can discuss it with them, but that's not going to likely happen until June.
I agree.
Because that's when the county, next county convention is.
Um, so, I would just say, I, I move to, I'm going to rework the motion, and so I would. My suggestion is we structure it as, I move to approve the transfer of, uh, the sale of, uh. The cemetery lot number thirty-four, Section E, in the Hillside Cemetery, and refer it to the delegation for approval.
Um, okay.
For.
I'm, I'm not sure we're getting the wording just the way that.
Yeah, I don't think so either.
I think at the end of that motion, and refer this matter to the delegation for approval.
Yeah, that's right.
Well.
Oh.
I'm just, it's an order, that's the way that.
Transfer, right?
So, I apologize, I'm just going to make a motion to table it for now. Um, we don't have to make that decision if it's going to be, that way we can get the proper wording. I, I, I'm, I'm also, uh, even though you didn't bring up the word, uh, consideration.
All right, hold on a second, you just made a motion to table.
Made it, right.
All right, so there's no discussion on the motion to table, uh, motion to table, Commissioner Coyle?
That's fine.
Commissioner Churchill, I vote yes, we'll table this until, uh, we have a revised motion. Okay, we'll move on to facilities operation, bid waiver request.
I move to approve the first light proposal on bid waiver request in the amount of three hundred and, oh, yeah, so, three hundred and fifty-eight thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars. For the expansion and upgrade telephone and data connections. And authorize the acting chair to sign all necessary documents as recommended by the IT manager and senior director of facilities planning and IT.
Any discussion on this? Seems we need this upgrade.
Yeah.
And we're getting it for less money than what we're paying now, because Robin Bernier is amazing.
Rob, I, I have to say, I agree in that, I mean, for many, on many levels, but the thing is, she is so savvy in, um, in.
Negotiating the right thing.
She's amazing, she really is, and she doesn't let go.
She's just, I mean, we've seen this over and over again, so thank you, Robin, because you're, I mean, you're really, it's really a, quite an effort, so.
Okay, any other discussion on this motion? Uh, Commissioner Churchill?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yeah.
I vote yes. All right, assisted living resident custodial fund approval.
I move to approve the establishment of a new bank account with TD Bank named assisted living resident fund. With the authorized signers on the account as the treasurer Scott Priestley, senior director of finance Charles Nicholson, and senior director of long-term care services Chantel GiConan.
Okay, uh, any discussion on establishment of this new fund?
Yes, please.
Chantel, you want to give? Want to give a brief overview on exactly what we're doing, do you mind?
No. Yeah, so I spent a lot of time asking for a lot of things from Chuck, and he has been really helpful. Um, so there's just a couple of things, as we've kind of been working through RCM and different setups. Where, um, right now, there's an account on our assisted living side, and an account on our nursing home side that are the same account. However, well, in theory, it's the same line, and I guess in our system. But it's, it holds the security deposit, not, it doesn't allow them access to use, and to keep like money for items here. To be able to access funds, and if they want to go get their haircut, or things of that nature. Um, because the line is currently holding their security deposit.
Well, this separates the security deposit from expensive that they want to use.
In my brain.
Wow.
Chuck, you concurrent?
So, this would create basically, so right now, there's not a true assisted living residence fund. They have a security deposit, or the county maintains a custodial fund that's for security deposits. It's like you, a landlord would have to do with security deposits, has to be an interest-bearing account.
Yes.
And within that fund, we have everything allocated out between all the residents who have paid a security deposit, including allocating the interest amounts, you know, monthly. To those residents and individual portions, but they have no resident fund account, how the nursing homes.
But in our computer system, their security deposit is in a line that says resident.
Or it's, I was.
So, do, do you recommend this account?
Abs.
Yes, as a separate fund, as a separate fund, separate bank account.
And then we're not, um, commingling with, not that we're commingling, but it's not being merged with long-term care. And it's better for auditing and compliance for CMS.
Yes, you need to keep it separated.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah.
Commissioner Churchill?
Chuck answered it for me, because I know security deposit may have been over a year, has to be interest-bearing.
Yeah.
So, uh, I just don't know how you, and I don't know, because I'm not the expert, how you calculate that through finance. But, uh, it does sound like this would be cleaner to do it this way, um, and easier, so.
Yeah, CMS I think would be happy.
CMS, yeah, exactly, I think it also allows us to create that other line in PCC, right?
That's my only concern, is that we would want to hold off on creation of the bank account really until the, the setup, any setup issues.
Oh, yeah, no, absolutely.
Because I don't want there to be like a long gap between approve, you know, between setting up the new bank account, and there's no activity.
Yeah, so would absolutely want to make sure on that, but I think the other piece that was a concern for me is because the line is equivalent in our system. When our residents are transferring from assisted living to long-term care, it's the same line you look at to see what they have for spending money in the account. And when it's their security deposit, so we're manually tracking and making sure that they can't pull that money out of funds.
It just would be.
I think the point could care people should, it's not their first.
No.
Go around with this is living facility where they need to have, probably, they should have a separate fund that's credit deposits.
Uh, yeah, there's just, yes, there's just a human error in that.
It's a setup, that's all.
And it, we very much should have the security deposit separated, discreet from.
Okay, if there's no further discussion on this, I'd like to break this to a vote.
Chantel, thank, just thank you for, I mean, that effort.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Churchill?
Yes.
I vote yes. Holiday schedule approved.
I move to approve the Rockham County twenty-twenty-five holiday schedule as recommended by the senior director of human resources.
Second.
Uh, any discussion on the new schedule, where essentially we're adding Juneteenth, uh, it's federal holiday. And along with everything else that we've been operating, and it's consistent and with, uh, all the union contracts, and thinks the right thing to do. Any other comments on that?
I'm just going to abstain because I'm not going to be here, but if you would allow me to ask, uh, Commissioner-elect Tom Morello, if he, if he had any problems with any of that. Okay, no problem.
As long as I get a day off, I'm okay. All right, on the motion, on the motion, Commissioner Churchill? Abstain of Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
And I vote yes, motion passes. Uh, employee retention engagement.
I move to approve the purchase of various gift cards as identified on the memo, uh, from human resources dated December twelfth, twenty-twenty-four. Utilizing category two-point-three-five in ARPA project funds.
Second.
Okay, I have an issue with this motion, because I don't see a dollar amount associated with it. I know it's referring to a memo that I don't have in front of me right at the moment. Can we add a dollar amount to this motion?
I can apply it, yeah, because it's, it's just doing a brief math, let me pull it up.
Fifteen.
There's ten of each, right?
Seventeen fifty, is that right? Is that what we're doing? Five hundred, five hundred?
Yeah.
And seven fifty?
Yeah, so seventeen.
Seventeen fifty, okay, so would you amend the motion to include this dollar amount?
I don't think, I don't think it's, I mean, I'm fine if you would like me to, but I don't think it's necessary, because it's as outlined in the memo. The memo specifically states the, I, I just total cost, sure, as amended, one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay, on the, uh, amended motion, Commissioner Churchill? Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
I vote yes. Okay, uh, authorization to obtain dairy imaging agreements.
Actually, can I just ask one question, Allison, so those are going to be disseminated at the first year, are those gift cards?
Yes. So, are you, yeah, I was just, I wasn't sure if you're still voting, because it's like.
They're going to do it in.
Sisters, oh, I don't know.
January, February, March.
Thank you.
Okay, then I'm going to change my vote to abstaining.
Actually, it's five fifty, so actually, it's eighteen hundred that we're.
Oh, there was a five fifty, and then?
Yes.
So, eighteen hundred? Okay. All right, Commissioner Coyle, you're still in favor, and I am in favor.
Thank you.
All right, that motion passes. Uh, authorization to obtain dairy imaging agreement.
I move to, uh, authorize the senior director of human resources to proceed with the necessary arrangements for establishing an account for an imaging agreement. With dairy imaging specifically for pre-employment testing.
Second.
Uh, discussion on dairy imaging.
That's costly.
I, I think that there are companies that will be working with it, I know they're, it's just not a rate, but what is it that we, in pre-employment? What do they do far as, I mean, they usually they're doing MRIs and X-rays and stuff.
No, it's, it's really, if some, we do a TB test, tuberculosis, and so I test positive.
They do that at, at their, oh, I'm sorry.
So, if it comes positive, we have to send out to an imaging to get an X-ray, to make sure they're doing it.
Okay, all right, understood.
Thank you.
Uh, any other discussion on this? Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Churchill?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right, exception request for long-term care services.
Eager to make this one, I move to approve an exception request to personnel policy seven dash three, new appointment rate for a long-term care employee SF. As recommended by the senior director of human resources.
Second.
Uh, discussion on this motion. Just for the.
D O N?
D O N?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Yeah, I read that, um, I, I, I do have concerns about the agreement that we have. Uh, there's a ten thousand dollar bonus that appears to be, um, giving or available on day one. Or the, not day one, first pay period, is that common for us to give? Of, you know, it seemed like they come to work a couple of weeks, could walk away, I mean, I don't think that that's going to happen, but.
So, um, historically, at least in my experience, I can't speak obviously for the county in that. The parameters are on sign-on bonuses have always kind of been determined by the organization giving them. Um, when I had kind of approached a few weeks ago and kind of discussed this with the candidate. Um, we had asked to kind of be able to offset, um, kind of the rate, so to speak, by pushing the second half of the bonus. Because there was already the twenty thousand sign-on bonus, and splitting it up, pushing the second half out to the year. And then giving the first half upfront to offset, um, their, their, their current concern around the annual salary. And the money.
Just making the mom numbers work.
So, we have brought it forward to the board, and you've kind of agreed to that?
Yes.
I think it's now documenting it.
All right. I'm good with this.
I see what your concern is, but it's making the numbers work.
I mean, I don't think we have that concern with this particular candidate, and I think that it's a, a good move for the county. All right, so, Commissioner Churchill?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Get bed medical staffing agreement.
I move to approve, we get medical staffing addendum effective December fifth, twenty-twenty-four, and authorize the acting chair to sign all necessary documents. As recommended by the senior director of human resources.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just, it's.
It's a dialogue?
Yeah, and it's like part of attempted permanent work, so we're, it's in a, an opportunity to get, bring on more staff.
I, I believe we have an individual that's looking to join us, that we don't have the ability to even look at considering that, because there's no clause in the current contract.
Right.
And so this will correct that.
This does, yes.
All right, uh, Commissioner Churchill?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Apartment head updates, Allison?
Um, it's just been super busy, I have a lot of things going on, we are going to be distributing the, um, wellness gifts. They'll start trickling out today, tomorrow, and Monday, um, just a lot of movement on, uh, stuff working for long-term care, department corrections. I've got something over at the county attorney's office that we're working on, so it's just, we're all busy and getting into the holiday season, trying to, this week. As we're wrapping our blankets. Thank you.
Chantel?
Um, good morning, Chantel GiConan, senior director of long-term care services. Um, our census of American homeowners, one thirty-nine, our assisted living is about forty-seven, but we do have a move-in this week with a brand of two forty-eight. We don't have any positive staff for COVID, we have one resident. Um, just kind of general update, myself and team members were able to go to Merrimack County, um, earlier this week. Look at some of their systems, specifically around Medicaid, and we have a lot of thoughts, ideas, and kind of, um, items to consider. And see if there's anything that our best practices that we come up to integrate with our team. I am going to Hovemberg County on Monday to spend time with the administrator there, um. For, uh, Christmas is well underway, our winter wonderland is coming up, but we have, um, and if you haven't seen it, it's truly amazing. Especially with it being my first year, um, a handful of churches essentially sponsor us, St. Anne being the biggest one. And the facility had just over six hundred donations for items for our residents for gifts. And a lot of wrapping the team is doing, but it is absolutely amazing to see just the sheer amount of donations. And gratitude to, um, contribute to making our residents kind of holiday. So, we have Christmas parties, um, for each unit coming up over the next week, which will be exciting. Um, and then the wonderland will be on the twenty-third. Other than that, I have been taking a lot of time of my fellow ODVs to kind of look at, um, some of the systems and items that staff have been bringing up as concerns. So, you know, there's been a ton of positivity that outside the lines and the parking lots, which are really exciting. Um, never had so many things about parking lots when I first started, but, uh, it's really, it's been wonderful to kind of see. Um, and I just appreciate everyone's help and support as I've been trying to figure out and navigate some of those items. Uh, to fix some of the low hanging fruit from a concern standpoint, so I really do appreciate that, everyone.
Thank you, Chantel. Uh, Chuck?
Uh, morning, Chuck Nixon, senior director of finance. Um, obviously, it came down to the finish line as far as making sure all funds are obligated in the federal sense for ARPA. So, I'll be bringing forward like an update next week, uh, to make it more clearer. Um, or, I think that's bad English, but make it clear, um, as far as us obligating essentially payroll. As far as the long-term care, uh, stipend, um, I'll do is be proposing a, showing what we spent so far of the five hundred thousand. And what's remaining in breaking that. Um, I'll do is be proposing a, showing what we spent so far of the five hundred thousand and what's remaining in breaking that out between um, wages, employer retirement, employer FICA, and then we'll put like, uh, we'll actually enter a uh, a purchase order in the system to at least have it like obligated in our accounting system as well. Um, to make sure that we satisfy everything uh, as far as what the federal government are looking at for federally obligated ARPA funds by the end of the, the county year. Um, also, also, I'll have to look at some other projects too that we might have some, some small amounts that are approved but not obligated yet and possibly be making some proposals for possible reallocation um, to other projects that you know that we have things going on. So it's like last week where uh, you, you know, thankfully, you know, approved the ten thousand dollar reallocation for vaccination, well, vaccination that has happened to date. So we moved over to a new PPE equipment, and I know that Don Dean right away is working towards making sure that those monies are, are spent too, so. Yeah, so there, there might be, again, some smaller dollars, but still, I want to make sure that we don't send any of those funds back to the federal government. Um, I mentioned before, Doc Polly's work on the uh, Assistance of Firefighters Grant, so she already met with uh, with uh, his last name, but Mike, the fire uh, department chief over in Hampton, and she's meeting with the individual in uh, in Epping. And I think she, she's lined up one or two other visits as well. And again, so these departments previously applied for grants. Often, more often times not, they didn't score high enough, or I think one time Hampton did, but all the monies are gone. Um, so she's gonna work with them through the bid line, it's the twentieth, as far as them to officially get their applications. And again, the county would uh, be party to like a small admin fee piece. Um, again, not any sort of extroverted thing, it would not hurt the award that the departments would be receiving. They did get to the end and get funding. Um, obviously busy with other grant filings too, friends of assistance. Um, February should be the, well, that report on year eight too, so yes, I will be happy when that was done.
I was just gonna say.
Obviously, the quarterly and annual ones for ARPA will continue all the way into the early part of calendar year twenty twenty seven, but um, let's see, as far as uh, new building goes, I mean, they're making great, you know, advancements, I'll, you can speak more to that, but it's just great to hear that that windows being installed even in building A, so that's, that's great to, to, to hear.
It's like.
And obviously, you saw the crane the other day, that will bring an HVAC equipment into the attic and stuff like that.
They, um, they landed the mast for the Sheriff's Department in Tana.
Wow, that's great. Yeah, it is great. It was, wow, that is exciting. Did you get to watch it?
I did get to watch it. There was a guy on the top, and he was just like flipping around like there was nothing going on. It was crazy. I called Kevin Walsh and I said, they're, they're flying you back.
You know, I can't believe like, these operators, the finesse with which they can move the, like, move things within inches on this, it's like.
Yep.
Unbelievable.
Yeah, so it's a great progress, great progress there. And uh, and with the uh, PCO for Harvey as far as the um, the, that takes care of that other million basically that was not obligated um, as far as the water uh, main project, so yeah, it says, you know, it takes up a lot of, from the last report that I had on ARPA, as far as that was approved but not obligated, so. It took up quite a bit of uh, of that portion. Otherwise, it's obviously very busy. We do have some obvious year-end things we have to take care of, whether it's making sure we're ready for W two's, ten ninety-nines. We have to do all those cross-checks to make sure nothing, you know, no one's gone over certain limits as far as withholding on certain items, you know, whether it's, you know, um, four-three-B plans or, or what have you. Luckily, the system, the payroll system should be good with those limits, you know, not allowing you to pass, probably some audit and everything, make sure it's as it should be. Um, again, this uh, we did have our Christmas or our holiday party yesterday in Fiance, so they make a swap, so that was a fun little time. Hopefully, sorry, hopefully no one heard our noise down below on the end of the floor.
For sure, we'll probably come up.
I think it's over your, it's over your, your printer or copier room, so hopefully. There was much noise, but it was, it was a good time. Um, and again, just overall busy, um, Rinda is helping other departments with the AP process again, so we're glad to help. Again, we can't, I can invest in interest to make sure everything runs as well as it can and, and those games go out late, so. And as a reminder, departments, there is um, there's no BOC meeting the week of Christmas, so there's no AP run the week of Christmas. Get your stuff in if you haven't already as far as for next week's additional AP run, because the next AP run will not be until the second Thursday, but I think it's January eighth um, into the next year, so.
Thank you, Chuck.
It's Wednesday?
It's a Wednesday, the eighth is a Wednesday, I believe.
Oh, so sorry, nine, sorry.
Well, I think we're having our meeting.
Oh, so is he, anyway, it's the eighth. The day we're on.
Yeah, so it's the swearing in, followed by the meeting thereafter.
All right, and.
And then we'll have a meeting right after, in the afternoon that day.
I mean, it should be a relatively brief swearing in because, because of the, we only have two.
Right.
Fine fellows.
Okay. Thank you, Chuck. Uh, Jude?
Good morning, Jude Gates, Senior Director of Facilities Planning and IT. Like everyone else, we're busy, all is well. Um, unrelated to the building, we had DES in this week for an inspection of our ice pond dam and vermin and lagoons. They inspect us every two years. They said we were doing a great job. It was kind of nice because there was a junior member that he brought, so that um, he could show them, this is how we're responsible owner takes care of this stuff. It was just made me really happy. I had the guys in that maintained the dam and you know, just makes you proud. Someone said, we're doing a great job. See you in two years, and that was, that was the extent of it. It was pretty great.
That's such a nice compliment.
It really is. It really is, yeah. Um, the roof on the biomass plant is being replaced, replace, repairs are being done on the jail, and on this building, we're doing flooring work, Florida proxy down at the jail. Um, there's a lot of stuff going on in the buildings. I, related to the, the new building, I thought it was kind of an interesting, I'm working with the post office and fire department on assigning street numbers, so we're at the point that we're assigning street numbers, and we're flying masks, like, we're getting, it's, it's going very, very well. The road crossing was completed, there was a little bit of um, cracking because it hit some ledge, I, I think is what happened. So they dug that out and they got it replaced Tuesday this week. I think they got that repaired done. They'll be, they'll be tying into the fire loop crossing this week. Um, because again, of everything that's going on underground, they have to shut up a couple hydrants, fire cops, it's gonna be notified. But it, it's all forward progress. They're calling transducers next Monday for the final hook for new readings for DES on permitting wall number four. So I think things are moving well. That's all I have, thank you. We do win our Yankee swap next week. You won't be able to hear us.
Thank you, Jude.
Thank you.
Uh, Leila?
Good morning. I have nothing. I have nothing.
Uh, Superintendent Henry?
Good morning, everybody. Um, currently uh, sitting at one forty. Um, the two been busy over here, a lot of different things, including, you know, little um, Yankee swap going on next week for the, the Christmas season. Uh, good news, Lieutenant Warden, um, who had his triple bypass has returned. Uh, he is doing fantastic and is happy to be back here. We're happy to have him back. Um, again, Officer Evans continues going out and do community projects. He is booked up. I can't tell you how far, and, you know, we only have a couple inmates at that time for him. It's, it's very limited compared to we had in the past, but we're out there, you know, he's out there doing a good job. Uh, shout out to my staff, um, because over the past few years, we really hammered him and worked hard on fixing their um, reports, those kinds of things. We had an attorney who was notorious about picking up cases and suing jails, and they've sued Rockham before. And we had a gentleman that had fallen out of bunk and all that kind of good stuff, and they were poking around. But after they got a lot of reports and everything that we did, uh, they dropped the case and told the individual, you probably should not seek another attorney. There is nothing here for you based upon the good job that we did of care and everything. So I was pretty happy with staff. We met this week for, um, we are working on our uh, field training officer program. Uh, we met myself, lieutenants, and assistant superintendent, PowerPoints, check sheets, all kinds of good stuff. Uh, we are very close, so we can launch next, uh, prior beginning of part next year and uh, start testing people and get the FTO program up and running, so the staff's excited about that. We're excited, so then the customer, um, creates more continuity. And then we'll go back with the um, our staff that been around a little bit to bring us back to homeostasis, make sure we're all on the same page, so it's, it's exciting. Last is, I had um, reached back out to ICE, um, where I'd started last year. Uh, now the new administration coming in. They um, they reached back out to me, very contacted them, and because they are starting to look at facilities. And we got a gold star over here because we're, we, we're doing a separate unit, our command structure that I will have a compliance slash risk management person after somebody retires, which we can focus on that. We got the gold star for everything. So it's been moved to headquarters and I'll be meeting with the new representative, so at least it's moving on it and we'll see what happens. Um, that is my hope. Now, obviously, that comes with a lot of work in our end, but staffing and space, and I think it's something we can accomplish, but I'll keep you in the loop on that. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Um, Superintendent Henry, if we are taking in ICE containers, is that a profit center for Golly?
Yes.
Significant. Um, yeah, you know, I think one thing that is so significant in this um, is, is it would require to open up a new wing, right? But we finally have the staffing to actually be able to accommodate it. So I know we were looking at this last year, but we're in such a better position with respect to managing this now this year, and some of the reasons, you know, some of the initiatives, I think, um, Superintendent Henry can really um, in terms of getting that gold star, some of it is some of the work he's been doing in terms of having a, like, ideas about compliance and certain things he's um, you know, progressing, moving the ball forward in corrections and some of the, his uh, organization. And so it's good for us internally, but also gives us a uh, put forward in the, in this process.
And we have plenty of rooms available.
Okay, so that concludes our department head updates.
Just on, with respect to rooms at the end, you know, there was a lot of concern, I think, um, in, in I'm with felonies for the changes to the statute with respect to felony spurs last year, and that are the popu, we would see a big increase in population. Um, there are a couple legislative things, so um, I think, you know, and I've reached out to, we don't have a um, Attorney Conway here, but I do feel like at some point we should try to take a look at that. I mean, it's probably more relevant because we talked about whether she's gonna fill that position, have filled it at the second part of the year, and I think we need to look at that data with respect to how many, what the caseload looks like, because what we're not seeing is a population increase at the House of Corrections. So um, it's maintained very consistently, which I think is overall a very good thing. The other thing is, beginning January first, we have magistrates coming into the court system. What that means is people are going to, for the layperson, people are gonna be getting arraigned or seeing a bail is gonna be set on the weekends and all other times. Um, it'll be curious to see, I mean, I suspect that won't have a huge impact on the um, population, but I actually think it could uh, reduce our numbers slightly.
Can I, can I jump about that?
Can I jump in about it? So there's a couple of things. One, we've got no guidance yet on the magistrate.
Two. Yeah, two, I guess they've hired like three. Um, there's fourteen category, eleven or fourteen categories, the magistrates would, that, that only can we see by magistrate. There is another bill put out there to repeal magistrates, um, because uh, you know, it's funding, and I don't think three is gonna be able to cover all these, all the counties for the timeframes that they're looking for. So there's some relationship, we uh, just scheduled a Zoom meeting for next week to talk about magistrates, also pretendence, because we have no guidance, and then some of the county attorneys are looking at it as, eh, with no guidance, and the way it's written, um, that they're just gonna be hold, be held, holding people on no bail status, so that could increase us on some of those until we figure that process out. And the other piece is, um, so we're meeting on that on Zoom, figuring out what we're, are we trying to do? And plus, do FCC ruling that we have reference phones and, and revenue and all that kind of stuff, so we have some things in the work that are really gonna affect the jail that we're trying to figure out altogether.
Yeah, I mean, I think that there's the statutory changes with respect to um, sort of mandatory preventative detention aren't going to be there are already places where people are being held on preventative detention, so I don't know that that is gonna cause a significant increase in the population. I mean, it's like, you know, we thought that if we only, if only we had crystal balls. But I think in, from a, yeah, and I agree, the magistrate stuff has had, there's been no guidance to the courts, no guidance to attorneys, no guidance to the corrections.
Well, I think, what I think will happen is, because it says no magistrate, so guidance, maybe not a huge increase, but instead of having an opportunity to see a magistrate or however component working out is, right now, some of the counties are looking at those charges and that kind of stuff. Uh, uh, there are just gonna be no bail, so it means that we hold, at least during the weekend, so see the courts, because nothing's put in place. Um, I don't think a huge increase, it would just be us figuring it out.
Yeah, I actually, yeah, I guess we'll see, anyway.
Okay, great. That concludes our department head updates.
I digress.
Uh, new business, old business?
I have just a couple of quick things if you don't mind. Um, number one, and it's just a suggestion going forward when the new commissioners come in. Um, that you think about putting the public comment at the beginning of the agenda so that, and we can see on Zoom if, if we do have members of the public. Um, so that they don't have to sit through the whole hour, hour and a half before they are able to speak. Um, I would like to see if, um, to give the, the members of the public consideration that they don't have to stay all day, that's number one. And then number two, um, it's not a big thing, but it would be nice to ask if, for instance, Katie Casey is on the Zoom. Um, we didn't ask her if she had anything that she wanted to discuss. She, she took the time to actually be here, so uh, she may not, but it would be nice to ask if anybody, um, that's attends the meetings that are our employees, if they have anything they had. So there's just those two things.
Okay, seeing no more further business, uh, we're into our public comment section. Uh, Mr. Moran, do you have the floor?
I greatly appreciate the opportunity once again. Um, while I was on hold, I had my office staff do uh, some research on your behalf, because I noticed you uh, mentioned earlier, Commissioner, that you were wondering what the other counties do in terms of uh, the transparency of their bid process. And uh, they all in different ways have a forum in which they read the bids. Um, Stratford County, for example, is opened by the commissioners by video and also expressed with their minutes on the website. Uh, Beldap County, you know, very same thing, open publicly. And in an, on and on, I, I don't want to bore you, but that's what they do. But my objective was what I thought a simple process is that when uh, Jude comes before the commissioners and indicates who after evaluation has been awarded the bid and their bid amount. Much like uh, you experienced with the console bid earlier. Everybody wanted to know what the other amounts were from the participants. And what I'm saying is after the evaluation process, when Jude comes to you, she has the amounts for each contractor, and it would be really easy for us, obviously, to be able to record the data if she read the company's name and the other bids uh, that were not accepted or not awarded. So that was my plight, and as uh, Commissioner, and I hate to bastardize your name, and I greatly apologize, Chinchello, I believe, or something to that effect. Sorry, Brian, and is that, um, on the spreadsheet that is posted on your website, um, like uh, Brian was indicating, Commissioner, uh, that the company names that were not successful are already on the sheet. All someone has to do is just fill in the number. So my company is not looking to understand what the guts of the bid were. That would be obviously more involved. I just want the amounts, and that's typically in any of the public uh, forums that we deal with. And that's typically in any of the public uh forums that we deal with, they open the bids. There is, much like on the wastewater treatment facility uh bid that uh you folks awarded this morning, there is a sheet in the bid specifications. That uh the contractors fill out and they tabulate at the bottom of the sheet what the total bid is. And that is the total amount that is read at every public bid. It's not, they don't go through and talk of any, um, you know, uh. Uh, addenda that have been issued and what their ancillary amounts were. It's the total bid that is recorded. Um, and usually it's mentioned before even the evaluation process. Because obviously there could be mathematical errors in, you know, compiling the bid. So it's just read publicly, and that's what we record. Whether it's for the Department of Transportation or the federal government bids, um, it's always just the total bid. Um, and that's what we were looking for. Uh, so I didn't know if that was possible, and that's why I approached you. In the past, my company has tried to work with Jude Gates and uh well aware of her schedule and how busy it is. But um we stopped doing that in two thousand twenty one because we were not getting the tabulations. Uh, who bid and what their amounts were. All we were getting was the successful contractor and the amount. Um, so I finally figured out at this time, why not approach the commissioners and just see if it's something that you folks would be interested in expressing during your meetings, what the bids were. And that was the whole impetus of my approaching you today.
Uh, Mr. Moore, would you mind uh giving us a walnut-sized uh description of who you are and what your company is and. Exactly what it is that you do, and I think that kind of has not been clear to us.
My company, uh, sorry about that, is Construction Summary. And we publish daily, Monday through Friday, on construction statistical news, not domestic news. So we're no different than a uh the union leader, for example, just a different expression of what we talk about. Um, and uh this is commercial construction only. We don't talk about residential construction, people building homes. So we publish all infrastructure work, roads, bridges, uh, and also ground-up construction, new construction. But the end use of what we do is all commercial work, public and private.
Do you have a website?
We're at ConstructionSummary dot com. And we're going into our thirty ninth year.
Great. Well, thank you for that information. Do you have any more to add?
No, no, I don't, and I don't need to take up more of your time with that, no.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. We appreciate you uh joining us and telling us about what your plight is. I think that we'll uh take a look internally as to our process and see if there's something we can do to assist you.
I appreciate you taking time.
Okay, with that, there's no other public comment. Uh, is there any other public comment? I'd see to see that there's none. Uh, at this point, do we have non-public?
We do. We have a number. Um, I move to enter to non-public for Tuesday, nine one eight, four and three, and invite Commissioner-elect Tom Morello to join us.
Um. Any discussion on that? Commissioner Foyle.
Yes.
Commissioner Churchill.
Yes.
And I vote yes. We are in our non-public session. We've returned from our non-public session and Commissioner Coyle has a couple of motions to make.
Correct, so we uh had six non-public sessions. I move to seal um non-public session one and two until April first, twenty twenty five, because I believe. Um, at that time, otherwise it could render our proposed action ineffective and it should be resolved by that date. I'm and I move to seal uh non-public session number four indefinitely because it could adversely affect the reputation. Of a uh member other than this board, an individual other than a member of this board.
Second.
Uh, any discussion on sealing those motions? Hey, Commissioner Coyle.
Yes.
Commissioner Churchill.
Yes.
And I vote yes.
And I move to adjourn.
Second.
Uh, Commissioner Churchill.
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle.
Yes.
And I vote yes. We are adjourned.